2021. As is our custom, we begin all of our meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We are very pleased today to have a pre-recorded video of students from Briar Hill School singing Oh Canada. Thank you. We would like to acknowledge the traditional territories and oral practices of the Blackfoot Nations, which includes the Sissika, the Pekani, and the Gaianna. We also acknowledge the Sutena and Stony Nakota First Nations, the Meti Nation Region 3, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty 7 region of southern Alberta. At this time, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome my fellow trustees, superintendents, staff, and public who might be participating in today's virtual public board meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Miner, do you have any changes to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following agenda change request has been received. The addition of opening comments as item 3.0, with the remaining agenda items to be renumbered accordingly.
Thank you. Trustee Bradshaw, would you please move the motion that the agenda be approved with the change?
I will.
Thank you. Trustees, I'll call on you each individually for your vote, in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Adams?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Bradshaw?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hare?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Herdlicka?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdman?
In favor.
Thank you, and I also vote in favor that motion is carried unanimously. Last week, the Board of Trustees received confirmation that we have complied with all of the directives contained in the Ministerial Order 162020 issued by Minister of Education Adriana LaGrange in May of 2020. As your publicly elected Board of Trustees, we were pleased to receive this confirmation. The outcome of our work is a stronger CBE. We are confident that this work will benefit CBE students for many years to come. To ensure long-lasting changes, we strengthened many of our policies. And for those of you who attend our board meetings regularly, you would have seen this policy work in action. Policies are important because they guide the board's work and provide direction to administration. They define the board's expected outcomes for student success, and they set standards for how administration manages operations. The outcome of this work are changes that will have a lasting impact on the organization in areas such as governance, risk management, program evaluation, and staffing. The changes we made will drive the long-term sustainability of the supports, services, and programming the CBE offers to students while ensuring its overall financial health. Throughout this process, we worked closely with Alberta Education and government staff. We valued their support and guidance. We also provided the minister with regular updates on our progress and appreciated her feedback along the way. We were supported by our governance instructor, the Alberta School Boards Association, and other external experts. You can see a detailed summary chart on the CBE website outlining the work that was completed in compliance of each directive. A few highlights include operating reserves are now set at 3% in policy to provide more financial sustainability. The CBE met this target in the 2019-20 school year. An external salary survey was completed. The findings confirmed that CBE non-unionized employee salaries, which represent about 200 employees, or roughly 2% of our staffing complement, are aligned with the public and private sector comparators. And changes were made to leverage the skills and knowledge of external professionals on the Audit and Risk Committee. This committee supports the board's financial and risk oversight. I am proud of my fellow trustees, and I'm proud of our admin team and all of the work that we accomplished together. Everyone attached to this work showed an unparalleled and unwavering commitment to meet and exceed the objectives of many of the directives for the benefit of students today and into the future. We will continue to provide educational programming that meets the needs of students while being responsible stewards of public dollars. Our next item of business deals with results focus. Today on our agenda is the annual monitoring of results to academic success. Last week, the board received a presentation and asked questions on indicators 1 and 2. And today's presentation and questions will focus on indicator 4. Chief Ussie, would you please introduce the report?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, as Chair Dennis has indicated, the report was presented to the Board of Trustees on January 12th. So today's report focuses on indicator number 4. At this time, I'd like to invite Superintendent Pittman to present this report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair Dennis, trustees, a few comments related to the analysis for indicator 4. One to just highlight again that we are not covering indicator 5 as a result of the cancellation of PATs and the change to diploma exams in the year of 2019-2020. Further to that, we'll focus primarily on the report card indicators and the change in reporting for results 2, where results were reported as a mean as it relates to each of the report card stems. And at this time, we're happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Trustees have received and reviewed the chief superintendent's report regarding the annual monitoring of results to academic success for the 2019-2020 school year. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational progress in this results area. I would now invite any trustee who has a question about this monitoring report to offer them to the chief superintendent. I would encourage you to please limit your questions to those that will assist the board to make a decision regarding whether reasonable progress has been made to the ultimate achievement of this results policy. I remind trustees that the emphasis for monitoring results is not on compliance, but rather on reasonable progress. So trustees, to aid us in walking through this report as efficiently as possible, I will break up the report into small sections and call on your questions related to each of those sections. The first section is 4.1, located on pages 4-31 and 32. So trustees, if you have any questions on 4.1 on pages 4-31 or 32, please indicate so now, and I will call on you. Trustee Adams, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you so much. Just looking at 4.1, all students, student report card results as a mean. I see that 2019-20 is, all categories are a little bit higher than they were in 2018 and 2019. So my question is, I know, of course, we closed down schools in March, and we did have a kind of a hold harmless kind of idea for grades, I know at that point. But do correct me if I'm wrong. And I seem to recall that grades can only then improve from that point on. So I'm just wondering, do we think this is an accurate reflection of where our students are at for 2019-20? I almost forgot what year it was, 2019-20 school year?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Adams. You are correct in certainly provincial direction was following March 15th, but a student's grade at that point could not decrease, but could improve based on their performance between March and June of 2020. These grades would be an accurate reflection of how students were performing on the outcomes to that period of time leading up to March. When you think about the reprioritization of outcomes as well between March 2020 and June 2020, that would also have had an impact on which outcomes may or may not have been covered in the same way simply due to the shift to online learning. And at that point, what was completely different than the online learning we most recently experienced in November. Although the report card results are not directly comparable to the 2018-19 school year, they do still surface key areas of focus where we need to look specifically at the achievement of students at each grade level across the district as measured by the achievement on individual report card stems. So the gaps that are identified within there are still indicators of areas of focus. I will say, though, that when a third year of data from the 2020-21 school year is added, and the context of this year is also considered, we will be able to better see how the conditions of 2019-20 impacted report card data to further understand what they may or may not truly reflect, given that ability to compare with each subsequent year of data that we're able to pull from and viewing trends. This will become more accurate, and the specific impacts of each year will become more visible for us.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdman, go ahead with your question.
Thanks. I think Superintendent Pittman already answered most of my question with that last... Oh, I forgot to turn my camera on, sorry. That question was mostly answered, but I was just wondering, what could the board expect to see going forward with regards to these report cards results? Do we think that these are abnormally high, and that the board in future years should be expecting lower results?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman, my apologies. The likelihood of student results improving in this same manner, I would not say is high. And it is also highly dependent on the teaching and learning conditions that continue over the course of this year. I think as we discussed in the public meeting on January 12th, the reality is, is the pandemic is not over and did not end in June 2020 and have a different set of circumstances being applied this year. And it highlights even more so the critical nature of the careful analysis of the patterns as they're reported on our report card data and our achievement data, and our ability to identify exactly how we prioritize and respond coming out of the pandemic. As I shared a little bit earlier in my response to trustee Adams, the subsequent years of data will also refine how we are able to highlight data from, say, the 2019-20 results 2 report. And the other piece that I might add is, as we broaden our use of local measures in the coming years specifically, and I've referenced those before, but I'll just go back to them again. When we're looking at our early years evaluation, the EYETA, our English Language Learner Benchmarks, the CBE Student Survey, the utilization of our assessment and reporting guides for ELA and Math K through 9, the calibration of those pieces are going to be really important for us to then compare to these other results. The likelihood of continued improvement to this degree, given what I think the reality we all know that we're facing, is one that we will need to be paying close attention to and may result in significant changes to priorities.
Thank you. Trustee Adams, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not really a statistics person, so can you help me out? Can you please remind me what is considered statistically significant and what is not? Is there a range that we look at, or how exactly is that calculated?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Adams. While I could nowhere near claim to be a statistics person, I am very appreciative of the expertise on our team and the level of rigor that is applied to understanding how we can analyze and apply statistical significance to this very important dataset. The significant differences that we utilize are and have been set because we've chosen the chi-square test as our test of significance. And I'm going to invite Liz Wood, or Education Director Liz Wood for Research and Strategy, to provide a little bit of background as the chi-square test is referenced as the test of significance throughout this report. And it is really important to understand how those details align then with the remaining analysis. Chair Dennis, through to trustee Adams. So what we apply, as Superintendent Pittman said, is we apply the chi-square test, and we use the criteria that Alberta Education uses on the Accountability Pillar Report. So in that report, they use an improvement measure, and that improvement measure takes the chi-square result, and it breaks it into ranges. And those ranges are then attached to five categories. And they are declined significantly, declined, maintained, improved, and improved significantly. So when we think about something that's statistically significant, and we layer in that we are using Alberta Education's criteria or categories, something statistically significant would fall either in the declined significantly or the improved significantly evaluation category. So again, applying what Alberta Ed uses, anything with a chi-square of 3.84 greater, which would be improved significantly, or less than negative 3.84, although it's not really negative, it's a comparison between current result and previous year result, would be the other end. So we've got a decline significantly, improved significantly. So really, it has to be a number that is equal to or beyond 3.84. That helps.
Thank you. Right, trustees, are there any other questions on that section? So 4.1 on pages 4-31, 32. All right, we'll move on to the next section then. So 4.2, which is on pages 4-33 and 34. So again, 4.2 on pages 4-33 and 34. Trustees, any questions on that section? Section 4.3, which is on pages 4-35 and 36. So again, that is 4.3 on pages 4-35 and 36. Any questions there? Trustee Hurdman, go ahead.
So this is with regards to students who self-identify as Indigenous. Other than a brief mention of science in Division 1, there was not really any mention in the analysis about the areas that were targeted for 2019-20, which were CTS Division 3 and Science and Social Studies Division 1, 2, and 4. But we say that we've met all of those targets. So can you just give a little context on why you felt that these targets were met and whether or not the increases, how significant the increases were? Thanks.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. The increases were consistently observed in these target areas based on the chi-squared comparison. So thanks to trustee Adams for your previous question, because it helps position this one. Based on the chi-squared comparison to the previous year's results, there is evidence of improved chi-squared test value within the improvement measure range. So given the criteria defined by Alberta Education, as was shared earlier, a chi-squared test value that is larger than 3.84 is considered significant. Even though we did not achieve this standard based on current year data, we still showed noticeable increases. For instance, in social studies, with a 2018-19 Division 1 result of 2.29, we would need a result that's around a 3 in order to achieve what would be identified as a significant increase. With more data collected and gathered over time, trends, as well as the continuity of the chi-squared value increase, that will allow for further analysis to take place there.
Thank you. So trustees, any further questions on 4.3 on pages 4-35 and 36? All right, moving on. 4.4 on pages 4-37 and 38. Again, that is 4.4 on pages 4-37 and 38. And moving on to section 4.5 on pages 4-38 to 4-42. So again, that's 4.5 on pages 4-38 to 4-42. Any questions in that section? And I can go ahead and start there. So on page 4-40... Oh, sorry. My question is for the next section, so I won't start there. Trustee Hurdman, go ahead, please.
Thanks. So in the report, it stated that widening gaps were mainly observed for students who self-identify as Indigenous cohort, and also for students who self-identify as Indigenous. Physical education was the only subject that no division showed a decline difference as a compare to the all-students cohort in 2019-20. So the no-division decline difference, there's a lot of negative words there, and I just wanted to make sure I was understanding exactly what was being said. So we're basically saying that in phys ed, we were able to narrow that gap, but in other subjects, the gap widened. Is that correct?
Superintendent Pittman, if you could turn your mic on, that would be a big help. Thank you.
My apologies. Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. Your question and point of clarification is an important one as we've been able to identify a few other areas where some of the language, while it does say what we mean, it may require additional clarification, so thank you. No, we are not saying that the gap between students who self-identify Indigenous and the all-students cohort group widened in every subject except PE. PE was the only subject where all four divisions showed widened gaps comparing the students who self-identify as Indigenous to the all-students cohort in 2019-20. The gaps widened indifferently by different divisions in CTF and CTS in Division 2, in Fine and Performing Arts in Division 2, French Language Arts Division 2, 3, and 4, Languages Divisions 2 and 3, Science Divisions 1 and 2, Social Studies Division 1, 2, and 3. However, the gaps narrowed for students who self-identify as Indigenous in CTF and CTS for Divisions 3 and 4. Fine and Performing Arts, they narrowed for Divisions 1, 3, and 4. French Language Arts, they narrowed for Division 1. And in Languages, they narrowed for Division 1 and 4. And in Science, Divisions 3 and 4, and Social Studies Division 4. So there's variance between each of those areas, and I think what we've identified is how we start off with that capturing statement with the multiple negatives which then require additional clarification. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustees, any further questions on 4.5, pages 4-38 to 4-42? All right, moving on to the interpretation section, which is pages 4-43 and 44. So again, interpretation pages 4-33 and 44. Any questions in that section? Trustee Adams, go ahead.
Thank you. Right at the very beginning, and I believe you kind of already answered this, but I'm just gonna bring it up a little bit again. Right at the very beginning of the interpretation, it says, "Due to the interruption of in-person learning and the move to remote learning for mid-March through June 2020, caution should be exercised when stating trends over time." So I know we did talk about this a little bit, but I guess what I really wanted to know is, how will we determine improvements after the pandemic? And actually, maybe more to the point, when will we be able to actually determine trends again?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Adams. I think this is an important element to really explore further and one that isn't going to be fully complete at the end of this particular question period. The caution statement is placed there and is an important one because fundamentally, we need to emphasize that the conditions for teaching and learning during COVID-19 at this time, positioned in 1920, were highly unique and should be considered when interpreting the results. So as we've outlined before, already talked about the reasons why that occurred. To your question around how it is we would look at trends over time, how we would determine improvements, one of the other elements of the caution is we have the conditions of COVID-19. And then we also have the limitations of two years of data. So currently, the chi-squared test is being applied to the two years of data being utilized here. So as it speaks to trends, we really do need to look at something more than five years over time. Having said that, while there will always be, and we've got other examples where we have the asterix next to a specific year related to the conditions and the ability to gather, say, PAT or diploma data, an example would be the floods or the fires that have happened in the past, we are still able to look at comparisons within our report card data and derive an understanding of what the impact would be. We'll be continuing to gather and analyze the report card data and utilize it towards building a trend even with the 1920 year and moving forward the 2020-21 school year. We'll be providing the percentage of key outcomes also in school development plans that showed improvement as measured by goal type and school type. So we're also looking at expanding the way we're measuring improvement connected specifically to schools, which is an important component. And the additional process data for determining improvements are also referenced in results 2, and were purposefully added there as it relates to this year in Appendix 1, and that begins on page 4-48. The return of provincial achievement tests as well will allow this indicator to once again be considered when determining improvement. And currently, we can't speak to trends right now as it is. We will still need to be able to, we will be able to speak to trends moving forward. They will still, however, have the caution and the identified statement of the context of last year, and I would submit this year as well moving forward.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdman, go ahead.
Thanks. I noticed that the building capacity section talks a lot about CTS and arts and languages, and not a lot about social and science. So can you just please give some examples of what we're doing in this area in order to build capacity? Thanks.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. Specific to building capacity for science and social, this is an important example of where the overarching work that is referenced in the all-students section around focusing on task design is where the bulk of our efforts have been trained thus far in responding to the data specific to science and social studies. Our curriculum support pages for science and social are updated to include both internal and external task design and planning resources, as well as professional learning opportunities for teachers and school leaders. One of the other exciting components in science where our curriculum support team has been working with representatives from Let's Talk Science to really engage in bringing this quality resource into classrooms across the system. Additionally to that, our Indigenous team continues to provide a wealth of resources and has focused specifically for social studies around working on task design that deals with Indigenous histories, perspectives, and experiences. And our land-based learning series, now in its third year, continues as a component to address the elements in social studies. Specific to this current year and in response to last year was also the scope and sequence document that we've referenced earlier for staff. That has been an important guide to our science and social studies teacher as collaboratively, they have worked through content-based curriculum. in designing them in line with one another's classes and looking at different opportunities to integrate effectively and making sure that we're covering those outcomes differently to account for all of the interruption. And then the last piece that we're also doing is our concept-based curriculum professional learning network, which really does leverage the important elements and big ideas related to science and social while focusing still on the concrete knowledge and skills that must be developed. And we expanded our professional learning network group to include fifty schools across the district with administrators and learning leader representatives to, who are focused on specifically science and social studies as it relates to the conceptual learning network. So a few things.
One or two there. Yes. Thank you. All right, trustees, last call for questions on interpretation, pages four dash forty-three and forty-four. All right, so moving on to the next section, under building capacity, pages four dash forty-four to four dash forty-seven. Any questions on pages four dash forty-four to four dash forty-seven? And I'll go ahead and jump in here while we wait for my colleagues to jump in. So on page four dash forty-five, I am so sorry, I forgot to turn my camera on, sorry. On page four dash forty-five, what is the work of the instrument resource working group? And I'm wondering, you know, how do they anticipate improving equity of access to instruments in the CBE? And, you know, will that work also include equity of access around factors such as sort of the condition and quality of the instruments that the system owns?
Chair Dennis, the instrument resource working group is a collection of individuals who are committed across all service units investigating our current instrument fleet, as I might call it. And they're making changes to support increased efficiency around how the instrument resources are actually shared across the system. Data from our instrument inventories and enrollment numbers have been collected and compared for the previous four years to determine how well the inventory we currently hold as CBE is aligned with enrollment. Over the past two years, extensive efforts have been made to train all instrumental music teachers in the Arcabas software, which is the software that is utilized for inventory. The other element that's important to this is the quality or condition of instruments, and that's also tracked in Arcabas. And teachers can indicate the condition of the instruments in their fleet, and support for this work comes from the Fine and Performing Arts Specialist. This school year, utilization of Arcabas has been maximized because we have a new centralized fee system for instruments, and that's pulled from the Arcabas data that teachers enter. The important work that seems really highly operational, that it actually results in, is the ability to address equity, and increasing participation in instrumental music classes is really the focus for this work. And at this stage, right now, the team is looking on creating efficiency and consistent use of the system so that we can utilize our processes and tools to then make better decisions about how that, or the instrument fleet is distributed across the system. When it comes to musical instruments, certainly, central purchasing is one of the ways schools obtain instruments. And at such time when the system can purchase instruments centrally, we want to make sure that we're utilizing the data and enrollment and need to be able to distribute those instruments in a way that really does support our schools where that need is best met and where we can increase enrollment and support where they have smaller inventories. So while a highly operational piece really does make a difference in accessibility.
Thank you so much for that. I'm sorry, trustee Hurdleka, I have you on deck next. I just want to ask a quick follow-up around that. So I've seen Arcabas and, you know, have assisted in getting information into Arcabas as a volunteer at one point. And so at one point, the CBE operated a, you know, sort of a central pool, like a loan pool of instruments. And my understanding is that there isn't sort of a central loan pool anymore, but Arcabas is kind of being used to replace sort of that inventory list so that we know what's in what school, what instruments are in what school, and that if we needed to transfer instruments from one school to the other, we could do that. Is that a correct understanding of how we're using Arcabas?
Yes, that was correct.
Thank you. All right, trustee Hurdleka, go ahead with your question, please.
Thank you. I have a question on that same page, page four dash four-five, and it could be a similar response, but I'll ask it anyways. Under the first bullet point, I'd just like to understand a little bit more the need to develop a process to request tools and materials for CTF. And I guess the reason why I ask it is, I guess I would assume if we have a CTF program in a school, that we have the materials already in that school. So can you just share some information on that? Thanks.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdleka, certainly, there's an ongoing theme similar to what I've referenced in terms of intent and accessibility of certain types of specialty tools that may not be common across all CTF programs across our middle junior, our middle junior schools. And so a really important example is that we may not need to have the same amount or access to the same amount of hand saws in every single school. And where we are making sure that another class may need to access those class sets of hand saws, et cetera, that we make those available. So making sure that we have a process where we're really leveraging some of those resources that aren't in daily and constant use, but are very perhaps specific to projects and/or timelines, where we can better share those across the system or between schools is what the team is really working through. Of course, transporting tools, making sure we're tracking those. All of those things are our elements that, because this is the same team that's working together, whether it's Fine and Performing Arts, or we're talking CTF, those processes can be replicated. And again, the intent of it is to leverage our current resources and ensure that they are being utilized as much as possible across the system to provide a greater range of opportunities to each of our students.
Thank you. Trustees, any further questions on page four dash forty-four to four dash forty-seven? I have an additional question. What is the System Loose Parts Play Initiative?
Chair Dennis, unfortunately, this year currently, because of COVID, actually, we've not been able to fully realize all of the joys of the System Loose Parts Play Initiative as these parts are currently being stored. That was not the case earlier. It is an initiative that was started via grant from Alberta Wellness, and it was focused on promoting physical literacy through creative outdoor play. And this initiative focuses on large loose parts that are outdoor materials that can be moved, carried, stacked, or altered in form, and they include natural, recycled, human-made materials. And these materials have been collected and shared between schools through a loan-out system. Just right now, though, they're not accessible as part of the concerns of various health restrictions, so we've had to simplify that sadly, but it's been an incredibly popular and highly welcome initiative.
Thank you. Well, we will look forward to the day when we can have our students access all the resources that we have. Trustee Hurdleka, go ahead with your question, please.
I have a question on page four dash four-seven, the first bullet, oh, yep, the first bullet there. Can you tell me about the Vision Team? And who they are and how many students in our system do they support? Thanks.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdleka, the CBE Vision Team supports students who are visually impaired and identified either with a mild moderate visual disability, so that's a code fifty-six, or a severe visual impairment disability, which would be a code forty-six. Currently, we have two hundred twenty students across the system with twenty-two students who specifically also use Braille. The team consists of one vision specialist and six strategists, as well as sixteen Braille assistants who support students explicitly. And the team supports the acquisition of the Expanded Core Curriculum, which is a vision disability-specific curriculum, and also the Alberta Education Essential Components for Programming for students who are blind or visually and visually impaired. And with all of those different elements reflected in that curriculum, the strategists, the Braille assistants, as well as the specialists, work with both classroom teachers and school learning teams to make sure there's accessibility to curriculum and instruction, to the relevant assistive technology, such as the Braille note taker or Braille computer and magnification devices and software. And they also provide direct instruction to students. Our Braille assistants support students in class in helping students access learning through transcription of print to Braille and assisting in learning UEB Braille code and relevant Braille codes. And they practice in learning how to read graphs, diagrams, everything in a, using a tag hands-on, and to make sure that they've got all of those pieces covered. It's highly subscribed, and you will never find them not in a class or supporting students. And we've had some pretty exciting demonstrations of incredible student abilities as it relates to Braille explicitly over the last couple of years.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdleka, go ahead with your follow-up.
Yeah, thanks, and thanks for sharing that. I think that that's really important for trustees and also our community to know how we support visually impaired students in our schools. I guess I just wanted some clarification. You said we have twenty-two students who, you know, learn through Braille, but we have a lot of sixteen assistants. Can you just clarify? I'm looking at this number-to-number kind of a thing, and it's not making sense to me, so if you could. Any information would be helpful. Thanks.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdleka, of the two hundred twenty students with the twenty-two Braille users and sixteen Braille assistants, the Braille assistants also provide a range of other supports beyond just students who solely utilize Braille as their point of communication. So there are a range of other, of other elements that they cover, and certainly I can provide further details at a later date relating to those tasks and supports that they provide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on page four dash forty-six, and it's regarding the Making Headway concussion course. And so I'm just wondering, do all of our phys ed specialists or any generalists who teach some phys ed classes and coaches, do they all take that Making Headway course?
Chair Dennis, our concussion awareness training and certification is mandatory every three years for any teacher who teaches physical education, including generalist teachers who teach their own phys ed from grades K to twelve. Teachers complete their concussion courses through the Making Headway course, which is offered online through the National Coaching Certification Program. And also in making sure that our coaches have that same training is certainly part of that, but this is a standard expectation across the system every three years.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdleka, go ahead with your question, please.
Yeah, I have just a question. I think it would be found in this section, but it's around, you know, we do create locally-developed courses. Do we currently have any anti-racist or courses on oppression or power offered for students at the CBE?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdleka, I think it's important, first of all, just frame out how locally-developed courses come to be and how they are approved by Alberta Ed. To your question around specific content, one of the requirements of creating a locally-developed course is that the outcomes of the proposed course are not already covered through existing courses. So many of the outcomes that we would expect to see in a course covering anti-racism are indirectly covered by some of the courses I will share right now. None are explicitly named as that, but there is overlapping content. So that is one of the elements that we have to really consider, especially when we look at many of the outcomes currently outlined within our social studies curriculum. The CBE has developed two locally-developed courses that would reference directly the content that you've asked about. One is Aboriginal Studies, grade seven, grade eight, and grade nine. And at its core, the Aboriginal Studies locally-developed course is built on the principles of anti-racist pedagogy and provides students with opportunities to develop a healthy respect for and curiosity about diverse ways of being, knowing, and relating to self and others. This course is currently under rewrite and review, and that's the policy every three years. You have three years for a locally-developed course, and then you need to review and rewrite for approval again through Alberta Education. The second CBE-developed course that we have is Inter-Cultural Studies fifteen, which is a high school course that promotes opportunity, citizenship, choice, and diversity, and inspires students to achieve success as contributing global citizens. The CBE has also acquired two other locally-developed courses that have been written from other school authorities. One is Leadership, Character, and Social Responsibility, and that's a sequence of courses, fifteen, twenty-five, and thirty-five. And it focuses on developing an engaged thinker, ethical citizen, and morally responsible and social individual. And then the second acquired course is World History, grade seven, eight, and nine, which provides students the opportunity to examine the origins of modern culture, political, and ethnic diversity. So with those courses currently in existence and our current curriculum, analysis has to be done to determine what other courses may not result in overlapping outcomes, but in fact, could stand on their own as a locally-developed course, and we continue to review those opportunities.
Thank you. All right, so trustees, just as we're concluding this section, I would just invite anyone who has any final questions on pages four dash forty-four, four dash forty-seven, to get in the queue. And also, if there are any other questions that we missed along the way, I would invite you to get in the queue now. This will be the conclusion of the questions on this report. So I have a, I'm actually quite interested to hear about the Truth and Reconciliation Circle. And the CBE has an elders advisory council. So I'm just wondering, how will this Truth and Reconciliation Circle differ from the elders advisory council, or, you know, will they complement the work of one another? Who will be part of the circle and how, you know, we're talking about results to academic success, how do we anticipate that this Truth and Reconciliation Circle will improve academic results for our students who self-identify as Indigenous?
Chair Dennis, I think at the outset, it's important to point out that in the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, we have or started with a new Indigenous education strategy. And that was part of the looking at results from the previous year's results too, and making significant adjustments that are in play currently. And one of the elements, as you've identified, is having the Truth and Reconciliation Circle. The Indigenous Education Strategy has been absolutely put forward together with and utilizing the incredible wisdom of the elder advisory council. And that elder advisory council you referenced, made up of our Indigenous elders and knowledge keepers, they've helped inform our decisions through Indigenous knowledge. When we look at the new Indigenous Education Strategy, the Truth and Reconciliation Circle is an important next step where we have an internal group of school and system leaders, and that would be made up of assistant principals, principals, system principals, education directors, and others, where we support and guide our collective efforts specific to academic achievement and well-being for students who self-identify as Indigenous. So again, it's another level of very focused analysis of current and ongoing data that we would be reviewing to determine incremental impacts of the new Indigenous Education Strategy as it is being worked through right now and implemented. The principles of truth and reconciliation do remind us that reconciliation must create a more equitable and inclusive society, and to do this, we must close gaps in education outcomes that exist between Indigenous and non-Indigenous students. The Truth and Reconciliation Circle will gather on a regular basis to monitor, and as I referenced earlier, adjust the CBE's Indigenous Education holistic lifelong learning framework and support actions through joint leadership, through trust-building, accountability, and transparency, bringing data forward in ways that perhaps bringing data forward in ways that perhaps we have not looked at, but also positioning it in a different structure where it's not solely about what's listed in results two, but as is a theme on many other elements, looking at incremental local measures that we would directly tie to key outcomes that we know we must address.
Thank you so much. Trustee Herdlicka, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. On, pardon me, on page, I was really interested, I brought this up last meeting, but page 4-54. Interested at looking at the chart there. And I think it really struck me when we look at like almost a third of our students graduate with a diploma in three years, a third in four years, and a third in five years. Is, am I reading this correctly? And I just find it really interesting. And please share some thoughts in regards to that for me. Thanks.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Herdlicka, this chart is an important one, absolutely, but the devil is in the details. So I think what we referenced the last time when we talked about this chart is that the numbers reflected in this chart are based on a grade 10 cohort moving through. And so whichever students were with us in grade 10 and then graduate at different points are accounted as part of our cohort. What's important to understand is that, for example, if we look at the three-year high school diploma number, and then you look at the four-year high school diploma number, they are not actually separate students, they are cumulative. And so with that, in three years, we had 6,235 students graduate with a high school diploma in 1920. In the 1920 cohort of the fourth year, when it references 6,737, that's accounting for the 6,235 in the three years as well as part of that. So it's a cumulative misleading component there. The other piece is that these numbers do change based on, so for example, if a student in three years were to get their high school equivalency diploma, but then in the fourth year, they were able to achieve their high school diploma, they would then move into that number. So numbers are never static year over year, even within the same cohort when we look at year three, year four, and year five completers. So that's an important element. It's kind of like when we're talking about the number of students in quarantine. It is fluctuating based on the timestamp of the extended quarantine. Now, that's maybe not a positive thing. Here's another element, but it, there's a lot of difference between those particular pieces there. And if there's anything else that I've missed, I'd invite Education Director Liz Wood to jump in, but if, I think I've pretty much got it covered. It's certainly an area where the data can be somewhat convoluted.
All right, trustees, any last questions on this report before we move on? Trustee Herdlicka, go ahead, please.
Sure. I'm curious if you can just remind me how long we have had an Indigenous education strategy at the CBE. Thanks.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Herdlicka, so of the last results reports, we've had an Indigenous strategy for the prior three years. There has always been specific work ongoing, and it's been outlined for trustees through the various results report around professional learning. What we are really attempting to do currently is focus that strategy in very targeted ways differently than we have before. Exceptional work has been done around building the base. However, the focus is really understanding how we are allocating our resources to close those academic outcomes for Indigenous versus non-Indigenous students currently. And we are looking forward to moving through those local measures and bringing those forward to trustees.
All right. Thank you. All right, trustees, last call. Any remaining questions on this report? Okay, seeing none. Any trustees who wish to bring forward a motion regarding exception or commendation should provide the motions to the Corporate Secretary and all trustees by noon on Thursday, February 4th. Sorry, that's noon on Thursday, February 4th, 2021. And this item will be placed on the February 9th, 2021 Agenda for the Board's consideration. So thank you so much for that discussion. And next, we'll move on to the agenda item, Consideration of Closure of Ross Carrick School. Sorry, my lips and my tongue are not working very well together today. So the consideration of closure of Ross Carrick School. So Chief Ussie, would you please introduce the report?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Our trustees, on October 27, 2020, at a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, administration brought forward a report recommending the consideration for closure of Ross Carrick School, an elementary school with dwindling enrollment. At that meeting, the Board of Trustees passed a motion to commence the public input process to give consideration to the closure of Ross Carrick School. Today's, today's report speaks to our compliance with legislation and board policy since that board meeting. At this time, I'd like to invite Superintendent Breton to introduce the report, and we'll be happy to answer your questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair Dennis and Board of Trustees, as indicated by Chief Superintendent Ussie, the Education Act and the Board of Trustees' policy on closure of schools sets out the formal process that must be followed when closure is being considered. Following the direction provided by the Board on October 27th, the CBE has provided written notice of the recommendation of closure, posted notices of the public meeting. We've held two public meetings, the first on December 6, 2020, and the second on January 6, 2021, and provided opportunities for the public to provide verbal and written comment. Accordingly, today, we can confirm that as a result of this work, we have complied with the requirements of the Education Act and of your board policy pertaining to ending the school closures. With this work now complete and the information now available to the Board of Trustees regarding the recommendation, we are available to answering the additional questions you may have at this time.
Thank you so much. The trustees, do you have any questions or comments on the report? All right, trustees, last call for any questions or comments on the report. Trustee Adams, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Superintendent Breton, can you please just remind me, I seem to recall there was very low enrollment for the kindergarten. Sorry, my cat had just put her tail in front of my camera. There was very low enrollment for kindergarten, and therefore those people who did register were directed to other schools. So if the school was to remain open for another year, if it was next year, is it my correct understanding there would not be a kindergarten or a grade one based on that?
Chair Dennis, to trustee Adams. No, so the intent here was that we essentially had, I think, six students that had pre-registered for kindergarten for this school year. And given the small numbers, the direction that was sent out was that parents could enroll their student within a school that was within walking distance, namely again Wildwood or Glendale School, for them to attend kindergarten. But the expectation is that those students would then return for grade one within Ross Carrick School. Obviously, if that wasn't the case, then the danger would have been that we could be exacerbating the low student population at the school.
Thank you. Trustee Harry, go ahead with your question, please.
Thank you, Chair Dennis. I actually have a few questions, if that's possible. Just following up on trustee Adams' first question, I believe that there was eight students who were reassigned to Glendale and Wildwood. Is there any feedback out how that has gone? Has it been positive, all that kind of stuff like that? Could I have a comment there, please?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Harry. We, in following up with those families, with the school principals of all of the schools, for those kindergarten students who then started to attend at either Glendale or Wildwood, all of those families are active members in both schools. And parents are also involved in school councils and virtual events. And both administrators at Glendale and Wildwood identify that those transitions have been very positive. The other note as well is that for the families who had students in kindergarten who then registered at Glendale and Wildwood, they also had older siblings in Ross Carrick School. Only two of those were then moved to or made the decision to join their kindergarten age siblings at Glendale or Wildwood. The remaining other siblings, for other students who may have been impacted, still remained at Ross Carrick.
Thank you. And trustee Harry, I don't see any other trustees in the queue waiting to ask questions, so go ahead with your remaining questions, please.
Thank you much. Thank you greatly. Question, we do have in the public comment, we received a letter from Mr. Duckworth, the city manager. The city manager sort of indicated a number of statistics, and I can go to them later, that indicated the population growth in the Ross Carrick area would seem to indicate that we would have a increase in population in the school, certainly in the near future. Can you comment on that, Superintendent Breton?
Chair Dennis, to trustee Harry, certainly. I think the letter from city manager David Duckworth actually says things that we've been saying along as well. However, it doesn't provide a CBE context, as can be expected, of course, the city looking at total numbers. And so maybe what I can do is just talk a little bit about the CBE enrollment context and then the CBE elementary school context in speaking to what is in his letter. So first of all, in terms of enrollment, he mentions in the letter that there are 227 children between the ages of zero to four years old. And so we have that information as well. It's part of the city census data that we pay for. And what essentially that means is approximately 45 students who could start kindergarten every year. Now, add to that, though, the fact that of those 45 students, only about 50% typically choose the CBE. Others would potentially select charter schools, Calgary Catholic, private schools. That brings that number down to 22 per year. And when you look at the Ross Carrick context, of the 320, I think, eight or so grades or ages five through to 14, I think if the data that he provided, only 43% have chosen to attend the regular program at Ross Carrick. And so of the 22 students that we could be seeing, if we apply that 43%, that leaves about nine students for Ross Carrick, which would be entering every year. That's only about, you know, one to three students shy of what we actually saw in terms of pre-registration for kindergarten. So at the end of the day, with that few students, even if all nine students entered Ross Carrick, we would still require merging of grades, and the school would continue to remain underutilized. That is why we ultimately redirected those eight kindergartners to the Wildwood and Glendale schools. And then in terms of the CBE school concentration or context, that area is actually littered with CBE elementary schools. There are a total of 10 elementary schools, including Ross Carrick, within four kilometers or four and a half kilometers of each other. All actually from Ross Carrick. If you just go from Ross Carrick, they're all within four and a half kilometers from there. Now, based on the city densification efforts and our experience with those, the growth that is identified within Mr. Duckworth's letter, we anticipate we generate approximately 74 students from grades K to nine, or that's approximately seven students per grade. So that, even if all seven students were to choose, 100% were to choose to go to the regular program at Ross Carrick, that would still result in a school with only approximately 100 students, and still well below what the total number of students was when we first recommended or proposed a school closure consideration in 2019 due to the impact that the small numbers of students was having upon the richness and the variety of educational opportunities. So I think that helps provide a little bit of that context. Certainly, if you've got any more questions on that, I'd be happy to expand.
Thank you, Superintendent Breton. Many of my questions are relatively similar and nuanced, and I appreciated the depth of your answer on the last one. But the utilization rate at the Ross Carrick School today is 18%. Two years ago, when we took a look at this same question, it was 40%. I have to be honest, I'm surprised that instead of going up, it went down. Can you comment as to what may have happened to cause this? Thank you.
Chair Dennis, to trustee Harry. I would offer that one potential impact is certainly related to the pandemic. But in saying that, when I talk about the pre-registration numbers being six, that was prior to the pandemic onset. So this would have been those pre-registrations from January through to mid-Febuary. And at the end of the day, I believe, again, we only ended up with eight total registrations. So that figure stayed, I would say, relatively low. The biggest impact upon the total numbers of students is the fact that last, so for two years ago and last year, there was a large grade five and then moving to grade six cohort. It was the largest cohort within that school. And so last school year, upon conclusion of the June, that large group left the school, and all of a sudden now you're seeing what has been essentially continuing to trickle into the school, which is very small numbers, like again, we were seeing this year.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer, Superintendent Breton. Switching focus just a little bit, I believe there's been a change in in operations and maintenance funding from the provincial government, and that in the new scenario, schools are based on their, school funding for operations and maintenance are based on their utilization rate. The utilization rate at Ross Carrick right now is 18%. So I believe, and please help me if I'm wrong, they would get 18% of what would be the grant if they were a 100% utilization rate school. And I believe then that gets fuzzy. 85% is 100%, and so on. But nonetheless, could I have a clarification, one, in regard to my understanding of the formula, and two, just what the difference in actual dollars might be between what would be assigned to Ross Carrick in regard to full utilization and what might be assigned based on the 18%? And I realize that's not exactly the way the money would be assigned. I believe it would go into the general pool and then would be distributed. But could you comment on that for me, please?
Chair Dennis, to trustee Harry. So the difference between a school that, as, between this school that is currently So the difference between a school that, uh, as, as between this school that is currently eighteen percent versus if it had, uh, essentially a hundred percent of the operation and maintenance funding that it could attract is approximately a hundred thousand dollars in difference. So if it had a hundred percent student population, so the school was full, it's four hundred and twenty-six students, it would attract approximately two hundred thousand dollars per year in ONM funding. Whereas right now, it's attracting approximately a hundred thousand dollars in ONM funding. Formula, uh, you, you're, you're very close. It, it does have a, actually two components to it. Both components are influenced by the number of students. Um, so the first component, um, speaks to, um, the, essentially the number of students times two hundred and eighteen dollars per student. And so that's a fixed rate irrespective of how full the school is. But obviously, the fewer students there are, the less that, that portion of the, the equation will provide. Uh, so if the school at four hundred and twenty-six was full, at four hundred and twenty-six capacity was full of students, it would attract close to ninety-three thousand dollars. But at eighteen percent population, um, that only attracts approximately seventeen thousand dollars. Then the second component is the utilization. So if I look at the instructional space at a thousand five hundred, uh, and sixty meters squared, the equation set states that if it's eighty-five percent utilized or more, if the school is eighty-five percent utilized or more, then the rate that, that, that instructional space attracts is sixty-five dollars per square meter. So a thousand five hundred and sixty times sixty-five dollars, if it was full, would attract approximately a hundred and two thousand dollars. Um, whereas with the school as it currently is, that same instructional space, a thousand five hundred and sixty meters squared, seeing as it's underutilized, eighty-two percent of it is underutilized, it only attracts forty-six dollars per meter squared. So a thousand five hundred and sixty-four times the forty-six dollars. And then plus the portion that is being utilized, which is only eighteen percent, so a thousand five hundred and sixty-four times the eighteen percent times the sixty-five dollars. So that brings us to seventy-seven thousand dollars. So anyhow, at the end of the day, two hundred thousand dollars if it's full, a hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, because it's eighteen percent. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Danny. It, uh, I understand, I think, okay? So the hundred thousand difference is, of course, the significant thing. In one of the written responses, uh, we received, and it was also mentioned at the, uh, at the online meetings that we held regarding the possible closure, the question was raised and the concern that if the school, if Ross Carrick was closed, the students would be designated, uh, to either Glendale or Wildwood, both within walking distance. Okay? But the question was raised that, I guess, in going to Wildwood, you would have to cross Bow Trail. And if you're going to Glendale, you would, you would have to cross Seventeenth Avenue. And the concern being the, uh, I guess, well, obviously, the safety of children in a high-traffic area. Can you comment on that, please?
Chair Dennis to trustee here. Thank you for your patience as I was looking for the unmute. Um, so certainly I can comment on that. Um, student safety certainly is, is a very high priority. And, uh, it, it requires a partnership between families, students, the CBE or service providers. At the end of the day, we also know that families will make the right decision for their child because every child is unique. Uh, but, uh, I think what I underscored in the meeting is that during the, the, the meetings that were held for the public input, is that we currently already have regular program students from the community of Westgate crossing the Bow Trail safely to Wildwood School. So they're doing this on a regular basis, on a daily basis. We also have students from other areas crossing Seventeenth Avenue and Bow Trail, accessing French immersion programming at Westgate School. So the circumstance that exists within this portion of the city is, is not unique to other sectors of the city. And, and families are making those, uh, those trips with their students and/or their students are making those trips, uh, every day throughout the city. We do have a safe student travel advisory group, um, so that if there is a specific concern around an intersection uh, or a specific crossing, that advisory group can, can look at that. Um, it is, uh, a, a group that is comprised not just of CBE staff, but also, um, and so we're looking at here from CBE School as well as from, uh, the area and, and the system level, but also, uh, representation from the city of Calgary, from Traffic, uh, AMAs, the Alberta Motor Association, the Parking Authority, the Calgary Police, Alberta Transportation, um, and so on. So it is a, an advisory group that does have quite a varied perspective and can provide advice to both the CBE, to parents, as well as to the, providing input to the city to help increase the safety, uh, of those travels for students.
Thank you. Trustee here, how many questions do you have remaining? I see trustee Adams is in the queue for a question.
I have my last one, if you don't mind, and at least I think it's my last one, okay?
All right, trustee here, so one more question and then I'll move on to trustee Adams.
Thank you kindly. Also essentially coming from one of the written responses. And of course, I believe it, it also came up at the, at the two meetings we held. But the, the question basically around, um, community schools which, which sort of become alternative programs. And of course, then the majority of public school students in that area end up going to that alternative program. But, but the question specifically that is in the letter I'm referring to basically wonders why Ross Carrick School could not become a science alternative program in the sense that, uh, uh, I believe there is no, uh, science school, uh, program in that area. And it might, uh, it might attract a number of students to there, which would assist in keeping the school open. Can you comment on that, please? And that's my last question.
Chair Dennis to trustee here. So in answer to that, I would say there's probably two, um, elements that I would, I would focus on. The first would be the fact that between, based on, on city census data and the knowledge of what is coming into our schools, we know that between now and 2029, we're anticipating we'll have approximately nine thousand five hundred fewer elementary students within our schools, within CBE schools. So CBE elementary schools, uh, utilization rate currently stands at seventy-seven percent. And if we do nothing, uh, that utilization rate will drop further. It's anticipated it would drop to seventy percent. So as part of our ten-year strategy, um, the student accommodation and facility strategy, uh, there is a recommendation to eliminate space for up to nine thousand five hundred elementary-age students, uh, so as to ensure that we maintain the utilization rates of our schools uh, within that healthy eighty-five percent or mid-to-high eighty percent zone, because that's the, the, the place where we get the, the, where students have the, the, the most opportunities for learning because you have that critical mass of students within the schools. And of course, funding for the school, um, is adequate because of the fact that, uh, a large component of it is based on the total numbers of students. But even if, for example, if we were to, um, choose to open an alternative program school at Ross Carrick, right now, we also know that there are only, well, there are fifty-five students from the community of Ross Carrick that are currently attending various alternative programs. So even if we were to attract all of those students who are attending a myriad of different alternative programs and attract them back to Ross Carrick, even with fifty-five students, you, you have to keep in mind that right now, um, enrollment is in the low sixties at that school. We would still only have a hundred and ten students total. Again, a number that is less than the total number that we had when we first recommended closure, uh, two years ago. And then I think the last piece of it actually goes back to, um, our knowledge of, of students within our schools and the fact that, uh, right now, there is a demographic bubble, if you want, in the middle and high schools, uh, for students. And so our middle schools and our high schools are, are very full. And so if we were to open a science program specifically at Ross Carrick, um, we would not be able to offer the same, um, continuity of programming, um, that is offered in other communities. Namely, we would only be able to offer it from K to six because there wouldn't be a middle school available to receive the seven through to nine, um, in the science program. And so those students would not have that same treatment, if you want.
Thank you, trustee Adams. Go ahead with your question, please. Thank you so much. I think, uh, superintendent Brett may have just answered it for me, but I'll just ask it. But I thi- I think I now understand. When you said, mentioned Westgate School, it just kind of triggered to me. I believe Westgate School is about five, six blocks or so from Ross Carrick School. Westgate, of course, being the French immersion, uh, elementary school. And then across Seventeenth Avenue, um, I think almost equal distance, on the other side of Seventeenth Avenue, maybe a little bit further to the west, is, um, Glen Meadows, which is our Spanish bilingual school. Um, and I'm just curious, do we know how many students, um, from Ross Carrick actually choose to attend those schools versus the regular program? And I think I just heard you say in your last answer, it's fifty-five, uh, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Chair Dennis to trustee Adams. Um, so there's a total of fifty-five students that reside within the community of Ross Carrick that attend alternative programs. Uh, specifically for French immersion, there are twenty-four students. And for Spanish bilingual, there are eleven students. Um, Montessori, Alboy School and Traditional Learning Center are the other, um, attractors from the Ross Carrick community.
Thank you. All right, trustees, any final questions on the report?
If you don't mind, uh, Chair Douglas, Chair Dennis, I, I do have one other. We, we've had a, a, an excellent, uh, question and answer period here, but we haven't chatted too much about the educational opportunities. Clearly, uh, small schools do present, uh, opportunities for children, but there are also, of course, downsides. I wonder if, uh, one of our superintendents could comment upon the, uh, possibilities when we, if, if this motion should, should carry, if we would move these students to, to either of the, I guess, two proposed schools, Wildwood and, and Glanwood, and the increase in educational opportunities for those students. Thank you.
Chair Dennis to trustee here. Uh, I think it's really important to recognize that, uh, well, and, and we did reference this during our community engagement sessions. The, uh, benefits of a small community school and, and that small and, uh, close connection certainly, uh, is an important one. However, the restrictions to being able to have flexible grouping, to shift different opportunities or to be able to have enough of a cohort of students to be able to, uh, access and attract other programming, as an example, uh, in other schools or previously for Ross Carrick, uh, the access to different community partners was and the lack of access now is a direct reflection on the smaller enrollment at Ross Carrick. Whereas at both the other two schools, uh, access to those different and enhanced community programming, um, other extracurricular events simply due to the availability of, uh, staff and, uh, the opportunities to be able to create those different experiences does increase with a higher population and, uh, would allow for both extracurricular as well as educational opportunities for flexibility, additional supports. I would commend the staff of Ross Carrick in that they have done an incredible job of, uh, wrapping around on all elements and, uh, being all hands on deck, so to speak, in that smaller environment. Um, however, there are limitations to what one can accomplish, uh, with less, uh, students being able to, uh, be organized in a different structure in school.
All right, thank you. So seeing no other questions or trustees in the queue for a question, uh, the board will now consider the approval of the minutes for the December second, 2020 and January sixth, 2021, public input meeting. So I would request that there is a trustee who would like to bring forward the motion regarding the approval of these minutes.
I can do that.
Thank you, trustee Hurdlicka, go ahead.
Sure. That the minutes of the public input meeting of December second, 2020 and January sixth, 2021, attachment one to this report are approved by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, trustee Hurdlicka. Trustees, do you have any questions on the motion? All right. So the motion on the floor is that the minutes of the public input meetings of December second, 2020 and January sixth, 2021, attachment one to this report are approved by the Board of Trustees. I'll now call on each of you individually to, to clear your motion or your, sorry, your vote in favor or opposed to the motion, please. Trustee Adams?
In favor.
Thank you, trustee Bradshaw.
In favor.
Thank you, trustee here.
In favor.
Thank you, trustee Hurdlicka.
In favor.
Thank you, trustee Hurdman.
In favor.
Thank you, I also vote in favor. That motion is carried unanimously. So trustee here, I would now invite you to please provide the board with the synopsis of the public submissions received by, um, sorry, received by trustees in relation to the consideration of closure of Ross Carrick School.
Thank you, chair Dennis. We received four written responses, somewhat less than we received two years ago. The first one basically indicated that they believe that there was a large number of families moving into the Ross Carrick area. They did admit that probably all those children did not or would not go to the Ross Carrick School. And as I mentioned in my question, there was also a concern about why a science school would not be appropriate for the Ross Carrick School. Uh, the second letter basically expressed the question and concern about the safety of students, um, crossing Bow Trail and Seventeenth Avenue. And I raise that also in question. Uh, the city manager's, uh, letter, uh, somewhat similar to the one that was sent two years ago. And of course, the superintendent Breton, uh, spoke about that and clarified some of the issues, at least as they pertain to, uh, to Ross Carrick at this time. And the last letter, uh, basically was a, uh, email received actually this morning that, uh, that basically spoke in favor of maintaining inner-city schools and that, uh, it was certainly in the best interests of, of public education for, for school districts, Calgary Board of Education in particular, to do so. And that's, that's the summary of the four, uh, letters that we received. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee here. Is there a trustee that would like to bring forward a motion regarding this report?
I, I think that's me.
Yes, trustee Bradshaw, go ahead.
Yeah, that's the Board of Trustees approves the closure of Ross Carrick School and all programs contained therein effective June thirtieth, 2021.
Thank you. Trustees, do you have any questions regarding the motion? All right, so the motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the closure of Ross Carrick School and all programs contained therein effective June thirty, 2021. Trustee Bradshaw, would you like to open debate?
Uh, yeah, thank you. As we consider today the closure of Ross Carrick School, I want to touch on some of the points contained in the information that we've been given by our administration. I want to speak today about the communities and how they have changed. Fifty to seventy years ago, North America was just out of a world war and facing a time of relevant, relative affluence. Homes were being built quickly in Calgary to accommodate the oil boom that was underway and communities were springing up very quickly. We see evidence of that in the off-site effects about the ages of our schools and why and why we have so many schools in that age range. Communities had a much different shape than they do today. They were much smaller, and in many cases, the houses were spaced much further apart. Density at the time was achieved by families having a lot of kids. Think about how many aunts and uncles you have. I have just under ten. My son has two. That meant more but smaller schools in every neighborhood. Demographics have changed over time. Families have changed. Families in Calgary have left kids now. Communities are much larger and homes are built much closer together to achieve higher density. There are a whole bunch of reasons for that. They go beyond what we are talking about today. But those changes are out of the hands of school boards. We can try to have input, but we aren't the ones making these decisions. I look at some of the neighborhoods in the deep southeast, and they look very different from the inner-city neighborhood like Ross Carrick. As all this has changed, there hasn't been any rapid or long-term solution to achieve either higher population numbers in neighborhoods like Ross Carrick, nor the density and population numbers like we are seeing in newer communities. It's left an inner-city school with very low enrollment and without the prospect of rising enrollment, certainly not to the point of us being able to deliver the viable and robust educational experience we would expect students to have. No one wants to close this school. We recognize the effect it will have on the community and the families living in it. This is a density problem that needed a solution 20 years ago, and we are not in a position as a board to carry this any further.
Thank you, trustee Bradshaw and the trustees for first round of debate. All right, seeing no one in the queue quite yet, I will go ahead with mine. So it is clear that it is becoming increasingly more challenging to provide a broad range of programming for the students at Ross Carrick School. When the board previously considered this matter in 2019, in my debate, I mentioned that along with all of the other factors the board must consider, at the heart of my decision was opportunities for students. Public education is the great equalizer. Public education is where every student is welcome, regardless of their ability, socioeconomic status, race, or religion. Public education is where every student is given the opportunity for success. We all love our neighborhood public schools, which is why the prospect of seeing one close can be very difficult. In 2019, the decision of the board saw Ross Carrick School stay open. The CBE made significant investments in an effort to attract more students to this school in the hopes of making the program at Ross Carrick viable into the future. Even with those efforts, the desired increase in enrollment did not come to fruition. The result is a situation where it is not possible to provide a broad range of programming for students attending Ross Carrick School. The students don't have the benefit of a highly engaged and active school council. Moving students from one class grouping to another in order to find the best fit for students simply isn't possible because there aren't enough class groupings in the school to make that work. And community support groups have removed their services, in part because of the low enrollment. All of these factors have a significant impact on the experience of students attending Ross Carrick School. I want to see the students from the Ross Carrick community have all of the best opportunities that the CBE has to offer. Should this closure motion pass, the two nearby neighborhood schools that Ross Carrick students would transition to have a myriad of opportunities for students that are quite simply not possible at Ross Carrick School. In light of that, I will be supporting a motion for closure. I would like to thank everyone from the Ross Carrick community for your input into this process. I'd also like to offer my sincere appreciation to Principal Fraser and all of the staff at Ross Carrick School for your care and commitment to your students. You are so much of the reason why these families value this school community. Should enough of my colleagues agree with me today in this decision, I wish all of the students from Ross Carrick the very best as they transition to Glendale or Wildwood schools. I have every confidence that the students and staff of Glendale and Wildwood are ready to welcome you into their school communities. I trust that your transition there will see you make new friends and find you in a place where you feel a great sense of belonging. And I encourage you to embrace all of the opportunities your new schools will set out before you. Trustee, sorry, trustee Adams, I believe that you are next.
Oh, no, I believe trustee here was in there before me, and trustee Hirdlicka.
Oh, boy. All of those popped up while I was reading my statement. All right, so trustee, okay, we'll go with trustee here, then trustee Hirdlicka, then trustee Adams.
Thank you, Chair Dennis. I think for all of us, there has to be a sense of deja vu when we take a look at this debate. Only two years ago, we were discussing the same motion, same issue. After 60 years, the doors of the Ross Carrick Community Public School were closed and its students designated to go elsewhere to receive a public school education, which is the foundation stone of Canadian democracy. So the question for my trustee colleagues and myself, has anything changed? And if so, what? Well, let's take a look at the changes, at least in my opinion. Two years ago, Calgary Public was in financial difficulties. So many needs, so many wants, so little money. But that's the way it's always been in public education. And I have a sense it will continue to be so for some time to come. But we did have some hope. There was supposedly a new, sustainable, predictable, predictable, inadequate funding formula supposedly on the way. Things were bound to get better. Well, we did get more predictable. Quite simply, the weighted moving average has put growing boards in actually a more difficult position. So compared to two years ago, every dollar continues to be very significant and probably even more so. And of course, we can't forget, as Albertans, we're in a period of economic difficulty. And of course, compounded with that, we have COVID. And so the problems have been exacerbated. Also, as mentioned in my questioning, the increased focus on utilization rates put small schools at an extreme difficulty. So we have to understand that. The third thing is, of course, happened since two years ago. We have had the minister's investigation, basically concerned with financial oversight in the Calgary Public School District. I know when I was chatted to in the Graham Thornton Review, they were very interested, in my opinion, regarding Ross Carrick School and it remaining open. And I have, of course, explained my position, and I will actually explain it further in my closing remarks. But nonetheless, there was extreme concern about that decision expressed in that. And I think, of course, today's decision will also be viewed up in Edmonton. And so we have to keep that in mind, and yes, we have a great deal of financial responsibility upon our shoulders, and that's what we have to take a look at. The last thing I'll mention in this, in this part of what I want to talk about is in fact, the population, the school population has gone down. Certainly, some of us, at least I in particular, voted to keep the school open based on the hope that there would be more students, that the school population would rise. Unfortunately, that has not happened. And in fairness, projections in the near future are not overly encouraging either. So nonetheless, we have a decision to make. And there are certainly reasons to keep the school open, and I will expound on them in my next address. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Hirdlicka. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I want to first off, thank all the parents and the students and the staff at Ross Carrick and throughout the system, community members who have been part of the discussion around Ross Carrick School. This is one of the toughest decisions we make as school board trustees, is to close a community school. And so today is one of those really tough days. The evidence in front of me shows that there are less than 70 kids in the school and four online in hub. This is the lowest number in 10 years. And as we've heard today in the discussion and in the information trustees were given, the province requires CB to have 85% capacity rate for schools to receive all of their maintenance dollars. And those dollars, of course, are used to invest in infrastructure for the school. And as we've heard, Ross Carrick has a capacity of 18%. And this just means that we're going to receive less dollars to maintain that building. We have three schools in the area where today we would build one. There is a small and mighty staff at this school, and they have done a remarkable job considering the restraints that they're under in regards to student population and learning opportunities. For instance, what we're seeing is grade one, there's one class, and it's been split for grade one and two. It's been a class split for two and three, and a class split for four and five. In a school environment, this makes it really difficult, especially if you have siblings, because you want to separate those siblings. And it's difficult to do that in such a small school environment. It's also difficult to get supports for students who need them, such as the English language learners. So those are some of my thoughts. But I will say that after the 2019 vote, the system did try to increase utilization by putting, doing things such as the Early Learning Center. But unfortunately, that didn't increase the school population. I voted against the motion two years ago. The main reason was the lack of supports for transition for both family and students. Many of these families have had difficult journeys to get to Canada and to get their kids to school. Living close to their child's school is important to them. They don't want to lose sight of their children. The CBE, since then, and the report in front of me, the CBE has set up a transition plan that I'm pleased to see, academically, socially, emotionally, and in regards to the community and parents. I've seen some big changes, making sure that they're creating a sense of belonging in both of the schools. There will be preliminary meetings between students and staff, making sure there's consistency and continuity from Ross Carrick to the new schools for each student. Things like in-person tours of the new school. Parents were concerned about biking to school and those heavy roads and how, you know, concerned about danger for their kids. There's going to be opportunity to practice walking with staff and also biking to school through ever-after kids. And also, there's support for families in that transition with this, through the school council. And there's going to be things like, you know, cultural activities and translators provided. It's a difficult day, but I believe that our system has put its best foot forward to support the students' families of Ross Carrick as we move forward. Thank you.
Trustee Adams, go ahead.
Thank you. No, much of what I was going to say has really already been said. I'd also like to thank the community, thank the teachers, thank all the staff, the parents, the students. You guys have done a great job with the school. And this is absolutely, trustee Hirdlicka is 100% right. This is the hardest thing that we do as trustees, is to close a school. But I do think it is necessary, for all the reasons that have been mentioned and for everything we've talked about. And I think for me, what really helps, because like it's been alluded to, we do, we used to build schools differently, and we used to build them a lot closer together. So one of the benefits of this area is the fact that there are so many schools within walking distance, including a French immersion elementary and a Spanish bilingual elementary. There's lots of opportunities in this neighborhood, which is absolutely fantastic. So yeah, I just want to thank everyone for all their hard work on this. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Hurdman. Go ahead.
Thank you. Like trustee Adams, I would reiterate my thanks that other trustees have also expressed for the community members and families that have taken the time to share how much Ross Carrick School means to them. And also to thank the staff at the school for providing such great learning opportunities to students in difficult circumstances. This is something that no trustee ever wants to do. And to have to have this issue come forward twice within one term is also, I don't recall that happening before either. Community schools are so important. We can, when we look at processes like this, that's really what comes to the forefront, is how much people love their community schools and how they are really the living, beating heart of their communities. And we want to support them as much as possible. We want to support that close-knit feeling that students have, where everyone knows each other and that they can all walk to school together. And we would love to support that. But unfortunately, there are sometimes other realities that get in the way. And in this time, it's not only financial impacts, but the low student enrollment has started to impact the learning opportunities in quite a significant way, even more so than two years ago. And it is really for those reasons that I do think that students and the overall system will be better served by redesignating these students to schools that are still close by. But unfortunately, not perhaps as close as they were. So I will be voting in favor of this closure. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. Are there any trustees for second round of debate? Trustee Hirdlicka, go ahead.
Thank you. As has been mentioned, Calgary looked different when Ross Carrick was built. Inner-city populations were larger, lots of kids. I remember going to school in Calgary in the 70s when elementary schools were just a few blocks away from each other and all the schools were hopping. Yet our communities and schools have changed. There are decreases in students in the inner city. We were expecting to close 16 elementary schools in the next nine years. In our neighborhoods, we have both community schools and alternative schools with the CBE. Alternative programs were brought in to compete with the charter and private schools and to boost the population in community schools so they would stay viable and open. Yet that only works for so long. And it means students leave their own students' community school to attend alternative programs in other communities, which impacts their school down the block. With the Choice in Education Act, the government is opening up public education more and more to charter and private schools. Remember, there's only one pot of money for public education. These schools receive part of that pot. The more there are, the more it takes the dollars away from public schools, schools that serve every student. I share this because there are many factors at play that are impacting community schools like Ross Carrick. These strong, beautiful, vibrant places of relationship and connection are cornerstones of our communities. That was truly, that was true of yesterday, but it's up to us, meaning our greater society, to make it true for today. Our decisions matter. They impact more than just our families. They impact our schools, our communities, and our societies. Where we live matters. Where we live matters. Where you send your child to school matters. Thank you.
Trustee Hare, go ahead.
Thank you. I think this debate has been exceptional. It has covered a number of issues which we often don't chat about. But I would be remiss as the trustee for the Ross Carrick School in the Ross Carrick area not to express my appreciation to the staff of the Ross Carrick School, to the parents of the Ross Carrick students, and to all those who have been involved with Ross Carrick School over the years. Should this motion pass, I would hope that the inevitable amount of sadness would also be mixed with a certain hope for opportunity and benefit as they would move on to other schools. Because, because there's no doubt this is an extremely difficult decision. It's closing a school anywhere at any time can never be easy. I would suggest that's why the provincial government puts it on the mandate of democratically elected school boards. Quite simply, it is difficult. It is challenging. And yet, it makes some sense that we, the locally elected people, bite the bullet and make the decision either yea or nay. So we understand that it's difficult. And of course, it's loaded with political dynamite. But the decision has to be made and clearly, we have to make one today. So it's important, I believe, that we make the decision based on the information gathered and our values. And what are our values in Calgary Public? Well, students come first. Learning is our central purpose. And public education serves the common good. And we have to be aware of those issues as we take a look at it. And of course, Ross Carrick is a public school. It is the heart of the Ross Carrick community. It has been for 60 years. Mothers and fathers have taken their kids to school, dropped them off and picked them up. And while at school, these students have built friendships and relationships and learned from their friends and learned from their teachers. They have learned we were all the same. And they have learned that we were all different. And that we were all special. And we were all in it together. We were all a community. Something else we have to consider is the possibility that the population may turn around. We don't really know. And yet, it hasn't happened so far. And we have to deal with the reality that we deal with today. And so although we as a board have to make this decision, but it will impact the people of Ross Carrick. It will impact them and their students. If we keep it open, there is the potential that things may get better. If we close it, they will move on. And if they, if our decision is to close, I would hope that these students, and I'm totally confident that this is what will happen, will become quickly involved with a new and larger community. They will develop new and larger communities of friends to learn from and to assist in their development as human beings. So difficult decision, but that's what we were elected to do. And as we move forward, I simply believe that we as trustees must always remember, students come first. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other trustees for second round of debate? Trustee Bradshaw, do you wish to close?
Yeah, I guess I'll just say really quickly, I think some of the arguments we heard in the debate were, got pretty high level. I just, I kind of want to bring it back down. These decisions we're making are based on the best available advice we're getting from our administration based on their technical expertise. I think the point in a democracy is that we take that advice. And then as the, and the advice from the surrounding community and their inputs, that we take that advice and, and make a decision. That's why we were democratically elected. And I don't see any advice that was, I guess I look at this as a more technical decision. Less than a political one. Unfortunately, as a politician, we have to make that decision. That's just how this works. So, so given that, I'm obviously voting in favor to close, but yeah, I think that's all I want to say. I'll close with that.
Great. Thanks, trustee Bradshaw. So trustees, I'll call on each of you now individually to indicate whether you are in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Adams?
In favor.
Trustee Bradshaw?
In favor.
Trustee Hare?
With reluctance, in favor.
Trustee Herdlicka?
In favor.
Trustee Herdman?
In favor.
I also vote in favor. That motion is carried unanimously. All right, folks, we'll take a short break before we proceed with the rest of our agenda. And so it is now two minutes to two. I'd like everyone to please come back at 2:10, please. Welcome back, everyone. Welcome back, everyone. Oops, sorry about that. Sorry. Welcome back, everybody. All right, uh, so next on our agenda is the consideration of closure of Discovering Choices to Marlboro for the purpose of relocation. Jekhusi, would you please introduce the report?
Yes, I thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, trustees, on December 8th, 2020, the Board of Trustees passed a motion to commence public input for the purpose of relocating the Discovering Choices Marlboro site. This school, as trustees are aware, offers an outreach program for students between the ages of 15 to 20. Uh, many of whom prefer, prefer, uh, uh, this outreach program, in comparison to a traditional, to a more traditional high school setting. Today's report speaks to our compliance with legislation and board policy since the board, uh, board's, uh, decision to commence public input. At this time, I'd like to, uh, to invite Superintendent Brethen to, uh, to provide additional information and to respond to your questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair Dennis and Board of Trustees, as you, uh, know very well, this matter of relocating a school literally 500 meters across the street is, it's, is being brought to you as a closure for the purpose of relocation due to how a school closure is defined within GC3E Closure of Schools procedure. In essence, because the proposed relocation will mean that the leased site at the Marlboro Mall will cease to be used for the purpose of offering educational programming, the school pro, closure process is triggered. The Education Act and the Board of Trustees' policy on closure of schools set out the formal processes that must be followed when closure, even if only for the purpose of relocation, is being considered. Under the direction provided by the Board of Trustees on December 8th, 2020, and during the intervening timeframe, the CBE has provided written notice of the recommendation of closure, posted notices of the public meeting, held a public meeting on January 13th, 2021, and provided the public with opportunities for verbal and written comment. Accordingly, today, I can confirm that as a result of this work, uh, we have complied with the requirements of the Education Act and of the board policy pertaining to school closures. With this work now complete and the information now available to the Board of Trustees regarding the recommendation, we are available to answer any additional questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much. Trustees, do you have any questions on the report? All right, seeing none. The board will now consider the approval of the minutes for the January 13th, 2021 Public Input Meeting. And I would like to request a trustee to please bring forward a motion regarding the approval of those minutes.
I will, Gusto.
Thank you, trustee here. Go ahead.
The minutes of the Public Input Meeting on January 13th, 2021, Attachment 1 to the report are approved by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Trustees, do you have any questions regarding the motion? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the minutes of the Public Input Meeting of January 13th, 2021, Attachment 1 to this report, are approved by the Board of Trustees. Trustees, I'll call on you each individually for your vote in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Adams?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Bradshaw?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hare?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdlicka? Trustee Hurdlicka?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdman?
In favor.
Thank you. I also vote in favor that motion is carried unanimously. So as the trustee for wards five and 10, I will provide the board with the synopsis of the public submissions received by trustees in relation to the consideration of closure of Discovering Choices to Marlboro for the purpose of relocation. As mentioned in the report in front of the board today, administration has recommended the Board of Trustees close Discovering Choices to Marlboro for the purpose of relocation. On January 13th, 2021, the Board of Trustees held a public input meeting, in part so that the Board of Trustees could hear directly from impacted stakeholders around this proposed closure. At the public input meeting, administration provided comprehensive details around the rationale for the recommended closure and the impact of the proposed relocation. Stakeholders were encouraged to ask questions and provide their comments related to the proposed closure for the purpose of relocation. No comments or questions were brought forward at the public input meeting. The public was invited to provide written submissions should they have anything they would like the Board of Trustees to be aware of as we consider this decision. Three written submissions were received in support of the recommendation to close Discovering Choices to Marlboro for the purpose of relocation. No submissions were made in opposition to the recommendation. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdman, go ahead.
Thanks. That the Board of Trustees approves the closure of the Marlboro Discovering Choices 2 program, effective June 30th, 2021, for the purpose of relocation.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions on the motion? All right, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the closure of the Marlboro Discovering Choices 2 program, effective June 30th, 2021, for the purpose of relocation. Trustee Hurdman, would you like to open debate?
Thank you. I think that this is pretty straightforward. As you've heard, um, everyone who has heard about the proposal and the community is in favor of it. It's basically what I would consider to be a no-brainer. We're moving 500 meters away. The distance from the C train station would be the same for students. The, we would have much more space at the same cost as before for very little upfront capital investment. So I hope that all trustees would be supporting this motion. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other trustees for first round of debate?
All right, I will go ahead and enter debate. I also will be voting in favor of this motion. I think this is a, this is a win, not only for all of the students, but also for the CBE. Um, we have the opportunity here to customize the space so that we can accommodate students in the best way that we possibly can. We have more space so that we can welcome more students. Uh, this is a program that is vitally important to the students who access it. And it's great news to, um, know that we will be able to accommodate an increasing number of students. And, um, and honestly, the, and the location change is really, the impact of the location change, um, is negligible in terms of distance. Um, there's still excellent access by Calgary Transit to get there, um, right across the street. So I'm very pleased to vote in favor of this motion. Trustee, sorry. Trustee Hurdlicka, go ahead.
I believe trustee Hare was before me. He can go ahead.
Sorry. I'm losing track of my order when I'm, uh, speaking in debate. I apologize. Trustee Hare, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, as has been mentioned, this is a good news story. It accentuates a program, uh, somewhat unique to Calgary Public, which, uh, which deals with a specialized group of students. Uh, and, and this is an important part of our public school mandate. So, uh, as has been stated by my colleagues, good news, uh, story, and I'm certainly going to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hare. Go ahead. Trustee Hurdlicka.
Thank you. Um, you know, outreach programs, are programs that are outside of traditional school buildings, and they're essential for, for many of our students. Um, these students have, um, irregular hours because they're working or taking care of families. Uh, some of them don't feel comfortable in traditional school settings. Um, so these are really incredibly important programs for our students. Um, this move will give more space for the students and more breakout rooms for CTS, um, greater access to technology due to more space. This is really great news for students. The $40,000 renovation will be fantastic, too. They'll be coming into a shiny new space with more opportunities. And I'm really proud of our schools and system staff, along with administration, for making this happen.
Thank you. Trustee Adams, go ahead.
Thanks. Yes, these are, these are the kind of happy closures that we like to do. Um, I agree with everything my colleagues have said. It's, uh, fantastic that they're going to be moving into, to a new space that's so close to the old one. I mean, how fortunate is that that we were able to do that? Um, and yeah, it's going to be, have a nice renovation to it and lots more rooms. I think this is going to be really, really great for our students. Um, so yeah, so this is one I very, very happily will support.
All right, any of the trustees for first round of debate? Okay, moving to second round of debate. Any trustees for second round of debate? Trustee Hurdlicka, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I would just, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, another piece of this debate, I think that's important. What we're seeing, it's becoming harder and harder to support these initiatives. We used to get about $60,000 per facility, uh, per lease, um, for, uh, our outreach programs, which we have four of. Uh, now, uh, with the change in our funding model, we're getting 150,000 in total for those four facilities. Um, so we used to receive over 100,000 more for leasing for those four sites. For this new site alone, it's 114,000 dollars of the 150,000. And, uh, we still have the three other, um, sites to cover for lease. This decrease in funding puts more pressure on our ability to provide for the most vulnerable. That's why it's so important to increase the space from the 3,000 to 5,700 square feet. So we can provide that opportunity for students' access to the program. The downside is the decrease in dollars from the province makes it more difficult to provide different locations across the city that are easier to access for students. And this is just one more barrier for vulnerable students, like the students we're talking about. Um, and so I think it just needed to be mentioned that, uh, this is also a really important aspect that's impacting this program and will into the future. Thanks.
Any other trustees for second round of debate? Trustee Hurdman, do you wish to close?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So trustees, I will call on you now each individually for your vote in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Adams?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Bradshaw?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hare?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdlicka? Sorry, trustee Hurdlicka, I couldn't quite hear you.
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hurdman?
In favor.
Thank you. I also vote in favor that motion is carried unanimously. So that brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. There were no items pulled from consent, and as such, all items will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. The board has two legal, one labor, one land, and two strategic planning matters to deal with in camera following the public portion of this meeting. That brings us to the conclusion of this portion of the agenda. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for today's meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February the 2nd, 2021. Thanks, everybody.